Good evening, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Before we start, and I'll wish you Happy New Year again, before we start may I ask you to please put your cellular devices to vibrate or off? Thank you, thank you, and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as you can see, we're in Board Docs and all of that, and I should have just welcomed you to the first meeting of 2019. Happy New Year. I wish all of you and your families and every family represented here tonight the very best New Year possible and that all your dreams come true.
Welcome back.
So next, we're going to have the mission statement. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence as we recognize the passing of Mrs. Josephine Barone, Office Manager at Highlands, 31 years; Ms. Adele Handlers, Teaching Coordinator for the New York Hospital Program, 16 years; Mr. Arthur Howard, Science at Highlands, 23 years; Ms. Gail Robinson, Substitute Teacher at MAS, 6 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into any announcements from any Board members?
I'll mention a few things. So way back in December, way back last year, I had the pleasure of attending some holiday concerts at some of the schools, some of which were standing room only. And they were wonderful and enjoyed them very much. I also attended the Special Needs PTA meeting, Understanding Your Child's Evaluations. It was well-attended, lots of questions, and I think parents really appreciate the opportunities that Debbie O'Garten has created along with Roampha, Susan LaQuentin, and the People, Personnel Staff to really have a sort of more intimate way of, you know, determining what's going on in special needs and being able to really ask the questions and being able to interact with the professionals. So I think that's really appreciated. Also, my brother's keeper at Slater Center, second anniversary celebration, Jo was there. I was there. One of the honorees was Colleen Murell, who's a house administrator at the high school. And I also attended the Kwanzaa Celebration at the Slater Center.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So some of us, Charlie and Rose and myself, we do mentoring at Rochambeau, and we did mentor in December.
We did.
We did?
We did.
Yeah. That was you.
Yeah.
Somebody looked just like you.
I remember the party.
So that's, yeah, that's, you know...
Remember the party.
And we mention it because it's very rewarding for us to be in touch with our students and be able to make a difference. Also, we attended the Rochambeau...
That I remember.
The Rochambeau Christmas Party, which is an annual event, again, just bringing us closer to our student and faculty at Rochambeau, and we appreciate that we're embraced when we go there and we get to enjoy some good food.
Mm-hmm.
Any other? Next, we'll move on to public participation. The Board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. It'll be a maximum of 25 minutes. We ask that you respect the privacy of individuals. Any concerns or issues of a private matter can be raised directly with the Superintendent and/or Cabinet. Do we have any public participation tonight? Sure. Please step up to the podium and state your name and your address.
Very formal. That's just a little nerve-wracking. Hi, everybody. My name is Lisa Benelli. I'm a parent in the district. I have a ninth grader and I have a fifth grader. And I'm just bringing this one topic up for consideration for whoever's in charge, just for consideration for moving forward for my child, but not only mine, for all the children. There is a lot of transition for kids coming from elementary school to the middle school years to the high school. So as you know, there's the sixth grade academy, and from the sixth grade academy it moves to seventh and eighth and then the ninth, and ideally, it's supposed to be easier for kids who are transitioning, but there's some considerations that I think make it hard. When kids transition from the middle schools, from the elementary schools, they really just mix up all the kids. There's a lot of consideration as far as, you know, race and ethnicity and maybe boys and girls, but there's not a lot of consideration of where the kids have come from, and I think it would help all of our children if that was just one of the components that are least considered in doing placement for the year. I myself, with my ninth grader, she experienced a very difficult time. She, excuse me, when she transitioned, there was nobody on her team that she knew. She happened to end up on the dual-language team, so she just didn't have any friends, and it took her till February. She sat alone. You know, I know they say that kids make, they make friends easy, but it's really not easy. You need people in your corner in middle school. And then she kind of worked really hard, made new friends, and then transitioned to seventh grade, and they swapped all the teams up again. And then again, none of those friends that she made, worked so hard to make, were on her team, and she never even saw them again. They were in different parts of the building for all of seventh and eighth grades. So like, they worked so hard to make friends, and then they're not together again. And then, of course, they transition again to ninth grade, and then it's all better off. There is no really putting you with teams or what have you. So I guess one of the things I'm hoping for the new folks coming in, I know we're going to get new administration for sixth grade, and again, not just for my kid, it creates a lot of unnecessary anxiety. It'd be great if just even 25% of the kids of one school is kept together so that they see familiar faces. They're just not walking amongst 600 children that they don't know. It's scary. It's already a transition with taking, you know, from one teacher to 10 teachers. It's just a way to ease the transition, and I think that in today's day and age, we're hearing about so much anxiety, kids being isolated, and that's exactly what happened to my daughter. So I'm just trying to help for anybody coming in and moving forward for all the children if that could just be something that would be considered somewhere, and hope that made sense. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Is there any other public participation? Okay, so next.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Before we start with the Superintendent's Board, I always like to welcome our liaisons from the high schools. It's great to see you guys. You haven't changed a bit in a year. Jackson and Pilar, stage is yours.
Let me just find my notes here. All right, so, good evening, Happy New Year. We are from White Plains High School. We're just the student reps. My name is Jackson, and we have some, like, a couple of things we would like to present and talk to you about what's been going on in our school and our district from a student's perspective. So first things first, this past month, we had a songwriter showcase. It's from this club that we have. They do a lot of showcases open to the district, so students have their friends and families. They come to support them. I believe it was an original showcase, so it was really cool to see the art that these students compose, performed in front of us. It's just a lot of fun and a good fundraiser.
So, hi, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm Pilar. Another thing that happened in December was Spirit Week at the high school. Everyone loves that, you know, complete with Pajama Day, lots of fun. Another thing was that the senior and junior classes had their fundraisers at Chipotle this year, which was really, really exciting. There's another one coming up soon.
All right, and in addition to Spirit Week, we had a Holiday Bazaar to kind of celebrate the holidays in the high school, so all these clubs and groups got together during our lunch period so they can raise money, promote their causes, and show school spirit.
And in terms of the arts and stuff like that, the jewelry classes and, some of the jewelry classes and the advanced art portfolio classes at the high school will be taking a trip to the Met Gala, Met Gala, to the Met Museum in February. I wish you'd go to the Met Gala. That would be cool. But Met Museum is still really exciting. It's going to be a lot of fun, so we're really excited for that. And this Thursday, the Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity Club, along with some other clubs, we're going to the Jacob Brinns Film Center. We're going to be watching a documentary about racism, and we get to have a Q and A with the filmmaker, so we're really excited about that.
That's all I have, yes.
That's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Halloween. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so I hope everyone had a great holiday, and we're back, and I know everyone was excited to be back, and looks like we're not going to have any snow this week. Probably just ruined it by saying that, but I thought before we go into long-range plans this evening that I would take you through a couple of updates that I think are of note and importance. We've been working a lot in transportation, the service that we provide to our parents and our guardians and our children. As you know, after, I'll call it the surprise storm in November, we took a real hard look at the way in which we were communicating with our transportation company and ways that we can improve our service. Happy to say that that work continues, and I think many of the corrective actions that we spoke about just a couple of months ago are in place now. To much acclaim, I've been hearing, the GPS location system is up and running for our school buses, so parents and guardians can now monitor and track in real time their children's buses, which of course, hopefully, will bring a nice peace of mind to moms and dads out there, particularly if there's ever concern related to inclement weather. We are also making sure that we're in careful and close contact with our provider in the event that we are going to have inclement weather so we can start sort of thinking about worst-case scenarios and any changes that we may need to make in advance, so we're not being reactive, we're being proactive. And again, the corrective actions that we discussed a couple of months ago, including bringing and making sure that we have communication with dispatch here at Ed House, has come to fruition as well. So essentially, we have a satellite dispatch base here at House, so we don't need to worry about utilizing telephone to contact dispatch and ask questions regarding routes or the position of buses, in addition to GPS location. Safety and security continues to be a prime focus here in the district. Practice, practice, practice. Our administration and our faculty and staff members at the building level are just simply outstanding. They've been working in very close contact with our district liaison, Mr. Sean Lewis, to practice, and you know, listen, I know, it's not a good thing when you have to practice for potential crises in schools, but what we do know is that just like in a fire drill situation, if we are ready for the unlikely event of an emergency, we're in much better shape. And I'm very happy to say that our teachers, our students have just been fantastic, and we're doing a great job there. Building-level trainings are ongoing. Our visitor management system is now online. I will share with you that maybe the day after we put the system online, we identified and flagged a person who should not have been in schools. And this, by the way, this person was not a parent or guardian, it was a vendor, and we were able to immediately make sure that that person was exited off the property, no issue, no event, but that's exactly why we have this visitor management system in place. Remember, it's not about the adults, it's all about keeping the children safe. And we were happy to see that working out quite well right now. And of course, ongoing review. So we just had a district-wide safety and security liaison committee meeting, and we're going through all of the steps and the action planning that we have in place, and thank you very much to all of those folks who participate there as well. Board Docs is up. Hopefully, for those of you who didn't log in and take a look at the agenda in advance of the meeting, you'll be able to do that next time around. The Board's wish, the Board's goal, was to ensure that information is shared with the community as quickly and as easily as possible, so hopefully you'll see as time goes on that Board Docs will be helpful in getting you that information. So now you can log in and watch the video of the meeting running, and you don't even have to come out, you can be in your pajamas and watch Board meetings and have the agenda right there. I do have to call attention to the high school. Again, they're just doing, not all of our buildings are, but the high school just did a couple of great things. The Memory Project, which was simply outstanding, and I won't play the whole video, but you can go to a link on our Facebook page. And essentially, this project allowed our high school artists to create pictures, create works of art that were then shared with students in Columbia. And you can see some of where these works of art went, as well as the children's reactions when they received them. See how happy those little kids are? They're getting their portraits back from our students here in White Plains. So take a look at that when you have time, because it really is heartwarming, and it's just another example of how our teachers are going above and beyond to create and allow our children to have real-life experiences that transcends White Plains, indeed transcends New York and the United States of America. These kids are making an impact globally, not just in their local community. We also have our new, like, today-new White Plains High School Art Gallery, where you can go online and you can view, and I'll go to January, and you can view works of art that our children are creating at the high school. It really is stunning, and you can go back into 2017, 2018, and just really enjoy and appreciate the work that our children are doing in the arts. You know, I am always floored when I go and I see the creations that these kids are putting forward, particularly because I do not have an artistic talent, but it's just amazing, and kudos to, again, our teachers and our kids. And when you have time, take a look at it, and really, you'll enjoy it. We had another meeting with our early childcare service providers here in the district and the city related to the White Plains Basics. Again, the Basics will assist and promote early learning, birth to three, and we are getting ready for a launch that will take place in the fall of 2019, and we're hoping that it's going to be a great big celebration where we come together and celebrate not only the Basics, but also our young ones. We're bringing community partners in from all sectors within the city. We're looking at medicine, we're looking at community services and supports, as well as education, as well as the local leadership to really put forward these five pillars that will assist and support our children as they learn, and our moms and our dads and our grandmas and our grandpas as they work to ensure positive development for our kids. So stay tuned for that. We're excited, and we're looking forward to launching it next year, well, this year. In terms of curriculum instruction, Dr. Hand and her team are working very hard on the Center for Applied Linguistics report recommendations, and our Dual Language Committee was hard at work just last week, right, Dr. Hand? I think you guys were, you had a meeting, right? And they are working toward putting together not only the timeline, but also the corrective actions that are going to continue to support the program and strengthen it as we move forward. In K-12 Social Studies, Mr. Dillon and our Social Studies faculty members are working on a curricular review, which is going to help to refresh the K-12 social studies. As a social studies teacher, I can tell you, the history book never gets smaller. You know, the science books sometimes get changed, and they take a chapter out or they amend a chapter, but social studies book just adds a chapter about how the science chapter changed every year. Right? So, you know, what we want to do is we want to make sure that our social studies curriculum is engaging, that it's not dry, that it's timely, that it's connected to real-life events, and that our children are able to really delve in there. We also want to make sure that we are continuing to focus strongly on civic engagement. We believe very strongly that all of our children should graduate from the White Plains City School District fully prepared to engage within the community, both the local and the greater community. So Mr. Dillon's working hard there, and Dr. Hand, I think we talked about having an update toward the spring, late spring, almost summer. And then the mathematics professional development is ongoing as we get ready to move into the second phase of our rollout, 3.5 for InVision 2.0. And again, I just have to tell you, the faculty and staff members really picked up the ball and ran this year with a lot of support and a lot of hard work, and I really do have to give a lot of credit to them. It's fantastic to see it come to fruition. Okay, long-range plan. So each year, what we like to do is we like to give you a sense of what we're thinking in terms of the present year, but also the future. It's not enough to think about just this year or even next year. We have to think about sustainability, we have to think about moving forward and making sure that our program remains strong even into the future. So before I even move in, I just want to thank Dr. Vikaro Teich, Mr. Pepper, Dr. Hand, Ms. Algarten, and all of the members of not only the administrative team, but also the faculty and staff, because it really is a team effort to move this plan forward. I also need to thank the Board of Education, because they spend hours and hours poring through this information, and while it's the first time we're presenting it here this evening at a Board meeting, the Board's committees have reviewed the plan as well moving up to this point. So thanks to everybody for all of your hard work here. It is really a team effort. Everything we do needs to be connected to and is connected to our vision, mission, and core beliefs. You will see that as we move through the long-range plan, you will see that as we begin next month and into the next couple of months, bless you, in talking about the proposed budget. We had immediate priorities this year, which we're attending to right now, which includes making sure that we're continuing to provide a rigorous and deliberately-designed curriculum for all of our kids, making sure that there's access available that meets the needs of each and one of our children, every one of our children, reduce chronic absences where they exist, and also continue to welcome and engage our community members and our families, because we recognize that that is one of the core foundational principles for the strong school district that we have. Our core strategies also continue to exist and are represented throughout the long-range plan. So why do we have to plan? Well, for all the reasons you know, right? There are a number of stressors that school districts face each and every year. Many just have to do with the fact that we do our best to guess what's going to happen, but you know what? A lot of times, you can't even guess what's going to happen, right? For instance, right now, the federal government is closed, and you know, it's only a matter of time before the closure of the federal government impacts local school districts with regard to any type of federal support that we would see. And you know, so what we have to do is we have to be very conservative in our projections and in our planning to try and account for any speed bumps that we might encounter along the way. Tomorrow, the governor is going to give his address, his budget address. This is considerably earlier than we've seen Governor Cuomo give his addresses in the past. We are looking forward to it. We are optimistic that Governor Cuomo will work to equalize and provide equity in terms of the fiscal allocations for school districts, which would of course mean that White Plains would get more of White Plains' money back to support our kids here locally, and we're hopeful that we'll continue to see equity as a driving factor in the budget planning. So anything from a turbulent economy to the tax cap, tax certs, which you know we have to deal with, our facilities, and of course, policy changes that require expenditures. We want to make sure that everything, all of the plans that our school district takes are looking to maximize efficiency and maximize the effectiveness of our program. When we need to shift resources around, this plan helps us to be able to do that, to be able to strategically reallocate resources so that we're supporting our program and we're not letting any programs languish. Making sure that we're staying fiscally healthy for the future to maintain our programs. Last thing anybody ever wants to do, and I can tell you that the Board of Education has been champions of our programs, and the last thing anybody would ever want to see is a dismantlement of the fine school district that we have. And we also know that the decisions that we make today have consequences for the future. So what we want to do is we want to make smart decisions today, strategic decisions today that are sustainable and that we know we're going to be able to continue as we move forward. So what's the financial landscape look like? Well, right now, we believe that we're going to be at a 2% tax levy cap, bless. We know that our tax base growth factor is about 1%. We know that we have pilots in the city that may come off. We also have pilots that may go on, right, Ann? What are we looking at, two and four, maybe? So we have to take that into consideration. We also, of course, have to take the tax levy cap into consideration, bless, and it's about, we think about 3.66% in terms of what our cap would be moving forward this year. We are taking an extraordinarily conservative approach to our revenue assumptions, so essentially, we're holding all of our revenue assumptions flat. Now, this is not a budget presentation, but when we're thinking about the future and when we're projecting, what we're doing is we're projecting state aid, right, and federal aid to be flat. Hopefully, there will be an increase, but we think that it's smart to keep that at current funding levels, because we just simply don't know. We talk a lot about enrollment. I've been having conversations about enrollment with many folks in the community. I think they're important conversations to have. We need to keep a careful eye on enrollment. We need to make sure that we're working in conjunction with the city related to proposed development and making sure that in our projections and our demographic studies, that we are, again, being conservative in what our projections are. Now, I can tell you that in reviewing our demographic studies over time, we've been very good in terms of being about 1% plus or minus in terms of our projections. These projections that are up here right now, remember, you don't have to write anything down, this will all be available on Board Docs if you're able to see it. These projections right here are based on our beds numbers. It's important to remember that when we're thinking about budget, we have to think about the number of actual students within the district, and we, you know, so there's sort of two separate sets of numbers. We can't sort of project too far out of what our demographic projections are related to our budgetary planning. But you will notice, as you look right across, that our numbers are relatively stable. We haven't seen dramatic spikes, we haven't seen dramatic declines, and of course, this is different than what many school districts are seeing throughout the state of New York. What many school districts are seeing throughout the state of New York is in fact a decline in the number of children attending schools. Towns are seeing decline in the number of residents. That's not what we're seeing right here. Our expenditure assumptions, our personnel costs, of course, are fixed, related to our collective bargaining agreements. We need to continue to make sure that in future negotiated agreements, that we have fair, equitable contracts with all of our personnel that are sustainable. Again, the last thing anybody wants to do is to ever see a contraction in terms of our ability to serve our students. Employee benefits, and when we're projecting, again, we're projecting 9.5%, which is a decrease from 10.55%. In terms of ERS, we have a slight decrease. Of course, there are going to be increases in subsequent years, and we recognize that. Health insurance, again, we're looking to have future increases. In terms of our tax certiaries, our tax certs, the district, of course, is self-funded. We're right around $6 million a year. We're projecting that again when we think about our plan, and we're reserving again for tax cert, which, again, very responsible, very conservative. Many school districts unfortunately have to go out to borrow to pay tax certs. That's not what we have to do here in White Plains because of good forethought and solid planning from years ago. Debt service is about 9.9 million, and again, we have other contractual increases that we need to consider between 3 and 4%. Safety and security, again, something that is within the long-range plan, as you'll see. We want to provide security or greeters at each of our elementary schools. That's something we would like to see in the future, additional supports in the grounds of the high school as well. In terms of food service, we want to reallocate the costs of the recess monitors to the general fund and provide a succession plan for the likely eventual retirement of our food service director, and that would be with the addition of an Assistant Food Service Director. Transportation, we assess that we saved about $1.6 million this year. We have significant improvements in operations and communication. Our rates are reasonable and within the local region, and we believe that we should recommend to extend the current contract at the approved ed law rate. District-wide, we want to fund co-curricular club activities that have been providing services for a year. We have a number of co-curricular activities that have been operating for a year. Teachers are volunteering their time. Kids love it, but because we didn't budget to have those activities funded, unfortunately, we're not able to get them on the list of approved and funded co-curricular clubs. We want to do that this year. We're also looking at providing a biliteracy program advisor position, well, stipend, pardon me, and through attrition, higher-level support in the business office and clerical support in human resources. One time, all the expenses would be in conjunction with our fund balance projections, which we won't really know about until March. we won't really know about until March. We are, right now, looking at that. But again, any one-time-only would be used to help further eliminate expenditures that would be required through a bond. We are looking at facilities. As you know, our buildings and our property are the people's buildings and the people's property, and the Board of Education has done a great job in terms of maintaining those and supporting them, and we want to continue to do that as we move into the future. We want to capitalize on those one-time-only projects when we're able to do so. We're going to continue to fund at $2.5 million minor projects, again, saving costs associated with borrowing. We want to use capital reserve funds to replace the turf fields at both the high school and Highlands. Pool renovation, high school vestibule, again, providing for additional safety and security as you walk into the high school building. Electric at the high school, which would be needed to improve our, goodness gracious, intercom system and our telephone system, right, and our overall electric, and some windows and repointing over at Highlands. We are planning to establish a new capital reserve. We are almost at the cap of the one that's been previously established. This will, again, allow us to continually act in a responsible manner to put money away so that we can reduce any potential costs related to borrowing. And our master planning committee has been hard at work, thinking about the future, looking at space utilization, thinking about ways in which the current configuration of the district supports our students and how it might need to be changed or adjusted or modified into the future to make sure that our children continue to enjoy the educational experience that they have right now. Thinking about our instructional program, our pre-K program continues to be very successful. We are in the second year of the pyramid model, which is grant-funded. We have very strong working relationships with our community-based partners, as well as our home-to-school connections, but we also want to continue to develop that. And that is, as we talked about, one of the ways that the basics can come in and support that work. We are going to be reapplying for the full-day grant, which will allow for some additional sections. I do believe some additional sections, right, Dr. Hand? I think that we talked about that.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully. Oh, okay. Social and emotional learning, and this is a little bit, Ms. Manelli was just touching on the importance here, and I happen to believe that social, emotional learning is really the foundation for all the other academic experiences that our children. If we don't have children who feel safe, secure, and a part of the community, it makes it very difficult to move into all those other areas. So we want to expand our guidance program from 612 to K-12, ensure that we have guidance counselors in our elementary schools for our children as well, a multi-tiered system in terms of social, emotional learning, which is including trauma-informed education, trauma-informed classrooms, as well as mindfulness. Again, partnerships with community agencies. Many of you know that we have a rather unique partnership with Andrus, where our children can receive services right in our schools. And we also are going to be conducting another district-wide climate survey. We're looking to train additional teachers in responsive classroom and also offer responsive classroom developmental designs in the Level 2 in terms of training and deepen practice throughout K-12. And we also are looking to provide additional opportunities for our building administrators and teacher leaders to go off and to learn more so that they can work together and bring back and turnkey those opportunities and those strategies with our teachers in the buildings. In terms of special education, again, connected exactly to our strategic plan, continuing to improve access to general education for our children, expanding the integrated co-teaching, K-4 at MAS and Ridgeway, 6 to 8, English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies, 9 through 12 support classes that are resulting in regions. We want to expand our ISP, our Integrated Support Program, 6 to 12, expand to Highlands and the high school. We are looking to review our programming at Rochambeau, including the addition of music. Presently, there is no music class at Rochambeau. We also want to continue to maintain our self-contained programs to support all of our kids within the school district. In terms of ELA and literacy K-12, a whole host of literacy practices that we are supporting moving forward, including assessment as well as instruction. And one of the things that I'm most proud of are classroom libraries. Over the last several years, the district has supported a great deal of resources to increase our classroom libraries, to make them relevant, to make them leveled so that children have a variety of texts to both be at their level and expand and enrich their literacy experience. They are culturally diverse in terms of the texts that are available for kids. So we've really moved in a very clear pattern to provide children with books that they want to read. And I think many parents and guardians have seen that, the results there, because our kids are really excited about literacy. Many of you know we have one book, one school. We're going to be having one city, one book coming up, so there's a lot of really exciting things happening in terms of literacy. Enhancements and enrichment opportunities at secondary level, Shakespeare and artists residency, I mean, you can't, these are experiences that are once-in-a-lifetime type of things for kids, and to be able to offer them at the secondary level will be fantastic, as well as more text selections for independent reading, classic literature, right, the canon, and contemporary literature. I was making a joke with some of our directors the other day, you know, the DeCameron's great, Canterbury Tales are great, right? But not always as engaging as what our kids want to read sometimes. And, you know, what we have to do is really give a lot of credit to our teachers, because they recognize that. So while it is important to experience the canon, it is also as equally as important for our children to have access to what they want to read and what they want to explore. And of course, integrating technology within the classroom. What is it that Dr. Hand says? Teach for, what is it?
Instruction first, technology second.
Instruction first, technology second. That's right, Dr. Hand.
You got it right.
Dual language, English as a new language and world languages. We're continuing to look at our current K-5 program, which I just mentioned earlier. We are expanding the dual-language program as planned at Church Street. We are developing or looking to develop that content area, the SEAL of Biliteracy. We had a number of students graduate with SEAL of Biliteracy last year. It's very exciting. We want to see more kids have that opportunity moving forward. This year, we are ensuring that all of our children who are eligible receive their English as a New Language services, and we want to continue to sustain and grow our programs if children are interested. Last year, we introduced ASL, American Sign Language. We want to move to Level 2 next year, and we know that we're going to have students who are excited to take that course. In math, we're continuing to build that content knowledge with our elementary teachers as we roll out Envision 2.0, 3.5. We're expanding the support for our elementary students in small-group instruction with the addition of elementary math specialists at all of our elementary schools. Presently, we have math specialists that are shared among the elementary schools. We're hoping to be able to bring math specialists to all of those schools. We want to continue to identify the highest-quality resources available. For example, I did mention Envision 2.0, but also Big Ideas Math in 6 to 11. And then, of course, enhancing our course offerings in dual-language to include bilingual math in grade 7. I mentioned social studies a little bit earlier, so I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I will, again, highlight the idea that we need to have real-life learning opportunities for students to take informed action in response to really deep thought, really deep thinking about critical topics that affect them now and will affect them in the future. This is what makes social studies classes exciting, and this is what helps students to recognize that they do, in fact, have a voice and that they can, in fact, make a difference in the world. And our student liaisons, we're just talking a little bit about our CED program earlier, and that program, that club, essentially, is one that we know does a great deal of work to help empower our students and make sure that their voices are heard, not just here in White Plains, but also outside of our immediate community. For science and science, technology, engineering, and math, we want to continue to provide engaging opportunities for our advanced study in science and engineering for all of our kids, expand Project Leadway. And again, Project Leadway is one of those programs that when folks hear that we have it, District Y, K-12, they're amazed, because it is such a great program, and oftentimes they're not able to do it, and we are here, and we're very fortunate. So thank you to the Board, again, for the ability to do this. We want to continue to expand and launch in K-5, expand the engineering and computer science strands, and also introduce a half-year course in computer science as well. We are, again, according to the long-range plan, which we discussed last year, finalizing, closing the circle there on our earth science acceleration in grade 8 for all of our children. So our students with special needs at Highlands will now be in earth science, and we're also looking to solidify the fifth team to have that team structure at Highlands. And that was something that we had been working on for years, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to finish that this year. Phys ed and health, and Ms. Trias is here with us this evening. Thanks, Chris. You know, it's not, and we were just talking to somebody about physical education. It's not just gym, right? It is definitely a multidisciplinary approach to wellness, physical wellness, emotional, and we're doing everything we can to provide our kids with all of those types of experiences as we move forward. It's very likely you walk into a gym in White Plains and you're going to see kids engaging in physical activities, but also with technology infused into it. I walked in and kids were planking using iPads to make sure that their cores were balanced. It was amazing. I just watched, I didn't do it.
They might challenge you.
They might, they definitely would. Continue to implement smart TVs and video technology to further that instruction, building capacity at Highlands in the area of Project Adventure. Again, another amazing opportunity that is very unique here. We want to expand all our heart rate monitors at the middle school and make sure that our resources are up to date for our health ed courses. In fine arts, we want to continue to offer the high-quality program that we have now. I just gave you a couple of examples just a little bit earlier. We want to offer music technology at the high school, and that space would also be available for other uses, non-ensemble music courses, et cetera. Offer a music course at Rochambeau, and to do this, we would need to hire a 1.0 FTE, a full-time equivalent music teacher. We also want to think about the future in terms of dance and expanding our theater. Again, I would argue that the White Plains City School District stands alone when it comes to arts offerings. I don't think, I mean, I'm biased, but I don't think anybody competes, and what we want to do is we want to continue to build upon and capitalize upon that already strong program moving into the future. In terms of our instructional technology program and library and business, what I will say is, first of all, we want to make sure that our library and media centers are true learning labs. We want to make sure that we're moving from the traditional library that maybe you and I would be familiar with to one that is much more open, much more flexible, inviting. And I have to tell you, our libraries are great here, but we can, I know our librarians have a ton of ideas for things that they want to do, and we want to continue to support that moving forward, including reconfiguring and updating computer labs in the centers. In terms of technology, we want to move into, it's cohort 5, if you can believe it already, in terms of our learner-active, technology-infused classroom. And we want to build, make sure we're continuing to build capacity for cohorts 1 and 2, as well as focusing on our teachers in grades 3 through 12 for the summer institute. The iPad, the one-to-one iPad initiative would cap out next year in grade 8. We would be moving forward with that, according to our long-range plan, but we also want to evaluate and redesign computer labs and also think about the future in terms of when children move out of the middle school up into the high school, what is that going to look like, and what are the types of devices that they're going to want to use and want to have available for them. So that's part of the ongoing conversation. Building-wide training for our secondary teachers to ensure that they have the training and support that they need to integrate technology into their classes, and they're doing it now. We just want to make sure that we're continuing to support them as we move into the future. And also transitioning to the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, the RIC, to host our big data. So this will save us money over time, because we'll no longer need to replace those servers here in the school district. We'll take full advantage of the RIC moving forward. So we talk a lot about what the purpose of schooling is, and one of the things that we know we want to do is make sure that every single child that walks into our buildings and walks through our doors recognizes that college is within their grasp, is an opportunity that they should have and that they can work for. Avid has done a lot in terms of broadening that conversation, bringing kids closer to college than they would have necessarily been, even in their own personal experiences. We want to add that second cohort at the high school to include students from Excel and increased English Language Learner and foreign English Language Learning students, former, sorry, in advanced and honors courses. Highlands has been working very hard at becoming a national demonstration school for Avid. Fingers crossed, they might actually cross that threshold this year in 2019, and we'd like to continue to support them in doing that, as well as the implementation of Avid at GW and Post Road and potentially other elementary buildings as the interest arises. Okay. So the forecast, looking in terms of our operations 18, 19 through 22, 23, to the best of our ability. What I just presented and these numbers over here to the side are very conservative numbers. As I mentioned, again, this is not a budget presentation. This is a presentation of ideas, presentation of planning. Much can change, dependent upon what the numbers actually shake out and what we need to be able to do in terms of moving forward with our proposed budget. However, despite the fact that we have very conservative projections here, I am happy to tell you that the district is in a stable financial position. And, you know, that doesn't happen by accident. It happens because the Board of Education is conservative. It happens because the teachers, the faculty and staff members, the administrative team members are all cognizant of our spending. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to be as efficient as possible, make sure we're spending our money smart, and making sure that when we can plan for the future, we're doing that. So things like having, you know, a capital reserve or tax cert reserve, these are smart moves that have helped us and continue to stabilize us moving forward. Now, what we have to recognize is that all things being equal, if we made no changes but we had no increases in any types of revenue, as we move forward, we would start to see deficits. So that's something we need to be mindful of. It's not something we need to be afraid of necessarily, but we certainly are going to bring that to your attention, because we want you to understand that we're going to have to make decisions dependent upon revenue as we move forward, years out, not next year, but years out. And we'll continue to update that as appropriate. I do want to make mention in the excess and deficiency in 18, 19, that number also includes that $10 million appropriated from CAP Reserve, as well as a $6 million in tax certs, so we're actually, we're in a good position in 18, 19. But we wanted to show you that number, because we thought that that was important as well. Next steps? All right, you made it through long-range plan. Congratulations. Our non-instructional budget would be presented to the Board at our February 11 meeting. There's a lot of work that takes place between now and then. I'm going to thank our administrative team members in advance, as they're going to be beginning their meetings with us, in fact, tomorrow morning. And we will be going through and talking with the Board of Education, receiving essentially our marching orders from the Board of Education in terms of our parameters. And our hope and our goal is to present our community with a fiscally responsible budget that's within the tax cap and that continues to support our students as we move forward into the future. We will continue to update you. There will be tons of opportunity for questions. Certainly, I am available if anybody has any questions related to anything that I discussed this evening or the budget as we move forward in the future, but I really would like to thank you for coming out this evening. This is very important. And I should also say that, you know, a long-range plan like this doesn't happen in every school district. So again, kudos to our team members here, because really, again, it's not about today, it's not even about tomorrow, but it's about the future of White Plains and making sure that our kids, you know, I would always, having a five-year-old myself, it's not about, you know, next year, it's about 11 years from now. What's the school district going to look like? And we want to make sure we're continuing to stay on strong footing. At the end of my report, Madam President, just a couple of updates. I'll be at MAS tomorrow, at the PTA, MAS, at the PTA meeting tomorrow. Looking forward to that. We also, on the 21st, of course, as we recognize and celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, we have an annual breakfast that we will attend at the Slater Center, and there's another, there's a luncheon put on also by the African-American men of Westchester, right? We have a PTA council meeting on the 23rd and the Big Five School fundraiser at the Coliseum on the 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rick. Wow. Thank you.
Like drinking from the fire.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. So next. Okay. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to the consent agenda for our summary action items. May I have a motion for summary action items, numbers 4 through 8? So, next we'll move on to the consent agenda for our summary action items. May I have a motion for summary action items, numbers four through eight?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I was just thinking about a long-range plan. Where am I? Where is my? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to recognize and thank our generous donors, $500 from ExxonMobil for MAS and $500 from ExxonMobil for GW. I should also point out later on in the agenda, we were very fortunate to receive $100,000 in support from our legislature, and we are very grateful for that, and we look forward to putting that to good use to support safety and security as well as the arts. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to item nine, our individual action items. The first item is the recommended approval of the appointment of Daisy Rodriguez, who is replaced, who would be replacing Joe Clardy as principal of Eastview Middle School Campus. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yes. Thank you very much. I would like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez is here with us this evening. Hi, Daisy, how are you? Daisy comes to us very highly recommended with a great deal of experience. We are excited. She was part of a very comprehensive search. Mr. Pepper and his team led that search, and we are looking forward to, well, depending upon the outcome of this vote, welcoming Daisy. It's okay, Daisy. Welcoming Daisy to the team.
That wasn't.
Nice. Nice.
Not nice.
You guys did it to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Daisy. I know I didn't ask you ahead of time, so if you don't feel comfortable, would you like to say anything? Great.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. I want to say thank you to the Board of Education for their support and this great opportunity, and to all of the committee members that were in various committees that I've met with. Everyone has been very welcoming, and I'm very excited. And I just want to let all the parents and committee members know that I'm here, whatever you need, I'm here to support you and work with your children and make sure they have everything that they need to be successful. Quiero decir a todos los padres que todo es disponible a ustedes. Cualquier cosa que necesite puede venir donde me. Y estoy aquí para darle todo el apoyo a sus niños para asegurar que tienen éxito en el distrito. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. Welcome to the family. Next, we have the adoption of the following policies. They've already been vetted by the policy committee and presented to the board for first reading. So, now we have the adoption of the philosophy and goals and objectives policies, community relations, school board governance and operations, administrators, visitors, and visitors to the school's policy. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry, just let me.
It's okay. Now, the president. Four thousand to six thousand.
Yeah, that's next week. Next, we have the recommended action of the board to approve the execution of a certain termination and release of restricted covenant with the city of White Plains. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Madam President, I see we have counsel here this evening, and I know we received a memo prior to this, and I think some of those questions will probably be best discussed in exact session if, I know there's a motion on the table. Once that's done, I'd like to see if we can make a motion, or a motion on the table. I'd like to see if we can make a motion to table this until after we have an opportunity and perhaps after the meeting to go into exact session.
Second. Do you want?
Motion withdrawn.
That would help?
Yeah. Motion withdrawn.
All in favor?
She withdrew it.
Okay, all right.
And I'll just make a motion if we might be able to table this.
Yes.
And then we'll hold an exec at the end of the meeting.
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to move on to board discussion. Yes. So, if we could have our committee reports, that would be great, for our board discussion.
Finance and audit, Matt, and we discuss the internal audit report and what would be going on with that. And I think everyone on the board received a copy of that.
Yes.
And also the long-range plan. The long-range plan, which we discussed tonight.
Quite a bit of work too, Ann, so thank you.
Yeah.
Curriculum and instruction, Matt, and again, we really looked at the long-range plan. So, a lot of what we discussed, in fact, was discussed when Joe was doing the long-range plan. We talked some about the dual-language advisory committee that Joe also mentioned, social studies review that Joe also mentioned, so.
I took over the.
Also, we met as HR, and we also, we've met our new principal of Eastview and discussed other matters that we really can't discuss. Next, and also we met as special education as well, and we do talk about a lot of the items that were in the, yeah.
The guidance update.
Yeah.
Yep. And I attended the safety, the school safety committee meeting on January 8th, whenever it was. Frank was at January 8th. And Ann, thank you very much for putting that together. Our consultant made it clear again how White Plains has always been a bit ahead of the curve in terms of safety. So, we are aggressively pursuing additional items and finishing checklists to make sure that our schools are as safe as possible, that parents can feel comfortable, the kids feel comfortable, staff feels comfortable. So, it was good to hear.
And the policy committee postponed our last meeting because of the volume that we had already considered, which was just passed. And we're moving along, we're getting this done, we're looking forward to the next. Couple weeks. Exactly. We're looking forward to the next couple of groups of policy sections, and we're determined to finally get this done this year.
Thank you.
Getting it done, yes.
One thing I wanted to mention that is part of the school's safety is the social-emotional behavior and discussion that's going on. It's not just the keeping the doors safe, but the fact now that we have a commitment to more guidance and psychologists and Andrus because much of what is internal in terms of school's safety is related to our supporting our children that way. So, it's not just barriers.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Before I ask for a motion to go into exec, is GW in the house?
I really like those jackets, actually. Those jackets are really nice.
Oh, yeah, we got to come over there for some. All right. Well, welcome. And, you know, we welcome everyone. We're happy that you're all here. You know, this is such an important, such important work, and what we really appreciate being able to do for our community. So, thank you all for being here, especially our liaisons. You really add another dimension to our meetings, and thank you. I might say it every week, but I think it's important, or every month, but I think it's important that you understand that you do add another dimension.
You lower the median age in the room.
So, you are all attached.
Which became more important to me last month, by the way.
Before we have elementary school students. So, also thank you, Carlos, our Johns, John Shepherd, and John Misavish. You know, thank you again, New Year, but we know you guys are there doing all that you can to make sure we reach the community. Happy New Year, everybody. And may I have a motion to go into the exec session to discuss legal and personal matters, negotiations, employment of a particular person, real property, and that's about it.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy New Year. Thank you, everybody.